All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm going to call the council meeting to order, so if we could first all please rise to pledge allegiance. I'd appreciate it. Counselor Eager, you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. As is custom, for those of you who have not been here before, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38A, Section 20, please note that tonight's meeting is being both audio and video recorded. If anyone else present is recording the meeting, we need you to identify yourself for the audience. So would you state your name?
Abigail Taylor, West Springfield.
Anyone else? The names of the councilors? Yeah, we're going to do a roll call in just a minute. So the town clerk's going to call their names. All right, thank you. All right, having said that, Otto, can you take a roll call?
Certainly. Counselor Laflambeau here. Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Griffin. Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Clune.
Here.
Counselor DiStefano.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Present.
Counselor Eager.
Here.
President Sullivan.
Here, thank you. Did you get that? All right. All right, so before us this evening, we have two public hearings. The first one I'm going to open, we have our town engineer here somewhere amongst the masses. Oh, there he is, way in the back. So I'm going to move to open the public hearing on the proposed amendment to Chapter 400, traffic orders of Dakota, the town of West Springfield, to enact Article 11 relative to establishing school zones. Do I hear second?
Second.
We've been seconded. Okay, we have a public hearing open. Connor, if you could just come up, give a brief presentation what this is about.
Good evening. This is about codifying school zones for all the schools within the municipality. In November of 2022, the Mass DOT rewrote some of its amendments to the MUTCD for what can be constituted as a school zone in the Commonwealth. Prior to that date, it used to only be grades K through eight. Now it's inclusive of grades K through 12. So what I'm hoping to accomplish through this here is that we codify all school zones in town as well as the high school, so that our office might be able to make a grant application tomorrow to the Mass DOT for a new set of school zone signs for the Piper Road corridor for the high school, which currently the lights that are there are not functioning correctly, as well as the fact that they don't have school zone signage, speed limit implementation. And in this case, if we're successful in getting the grant application, it will also include radar signs that display the oncoming traffic's speed. So what I've done here in this is create language, codifying the street sections to and from for each individual school, and establishing dates and times of operation, as well as the speed limit enforcement of 20 miles per hour for each school zone.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll open it up to anyone from the public who would like to address the council or our town engineer relative, specific to this public hearing that's open. And if you do, you have to come to the microphone, state your name, address, and then you're allowed five minutes to speak. Anyone? Councilors? Okay.
May I speak?
Sure. You have to come up to the microphone.
So my name is, I could be public speaking, but my name is Keith McDonald, and my daughter goes to school at the Charter School in West Springfield.
I'm going to interrupt you for a second. That's going to come up during public speak-out.
Okay, I'd be happy to speak at that time.
Yeah, we'll have you come back up.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Counselor? Wait a second?
Second.
The seconded discussion among the council. All right, seeing none, go to vote. Counselor Eager? Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Laflambeau?
Yes.
I vote yes. That public hearing is closed. We do want to welcome Counselor Eager back from his world travels, so welcome back. All right, next up, we have our second public hearing. I'm going to move to open the public hearing on the proposed zoning map amendment for the parcel at the corner of Whitney Ave and Highland Ave to be changed from Resident A2 to Resident C.
Second.
We've been seconded. Okay, the public hearing's open, but before we get going, I'm just going to explain to everybody the rules of engagement, so that we kind of follow along those rules. What's going to happen is first, we allow the petitioner to come up and make a presentation. After that, I'll open it up to questions or comments to the public. You're limited to five minutes. I'll be rigid on the five minutes, just so everybody understands. And also, when someone's talking, we all appreciate it if you could be kind of quiet in the audience, so we all have the benefit of what they're saying. I also want to let everybody know, there's been some conversation about going to the subcommittee, the ordinance subcommittee meetings, and I just want to read into the record legal opinion from our city solicitor, which reads, "I've been made aware that residents were being encouraged to attend the ordinance and policy subcommittee meeting to voice their concerns about the pending zone change proposal on Whitney Ave. I strongly advise against this due to the fact that a public hearing is required by Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, and has already been publicly noticed for the full council. Anyone desiring to submit feedback should do so only at the public hearing, so that all councilors can be present to hear the concerns, and so that the petitioner may be given an opportunity to respond. In addition, any written comments that are submitted by the public will be forwarded to each council member. Sometimes it's hard to determine if an email was just sent to me or a particular counselor. So what we've done is we've copied, both hard copy and emailed to each counselor, so they have those comments and concerns that might have been addressed. Having said that, I do want to read into the record the emails that we have, just so that you know. And if I missed anybody, you can come and address me after the meeting. We might have missed one or two. We had quite a few. But anyway, for the record, Sister Kathleen Popko, Sisters of Providence, and if I butchered somebody's name, I apologize. Molly Lothorn, Lothon, Crystal Ritchie, Judy Athis, Igor Carapunarelli, if I say that right, let me see, Nancy Slowick Jira, Danine Ritucci, the Rossmeisel family, Lori Messer, Gina Frank Kelly, Ann Burns, let me see, Allison Bartlett O'Donnell Esquire, and it looks like we have one from her husband, A.J. O'Donnell Esquire, Emily Davilia, and from John Wyszolowski, did I say that right? President CEO. Now, having said your name, we have your email, we already have your concerns, so it's not necessary for you to speak tonight. If you do want to speak, I'll certainly allow it, but we already have these. And what will probably happen, if the public hearing gets continued to the next meeting, anybody who's spoken at this meeting, we're not going to have any redundancy at the next one. So just so everybody knows, again, the rules of engagement moving forward, and it's a five-minute period, and you do have to come to the microphone. And again, we have these emails if you choose not to speak. So I'm going to open, yes.
One comment. You said Lori Messer. Did you mean Messer or Mission?
Well, it says, I'm pretty sure it says Messer, M-E-S-S-E-R.
Okay. No, I wrote an email to it on Lori Mission.
Oh, okay, well. No, 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 no. All right, we'll find that one.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to open it up to the petitioner, make your presentation, and then we'll go to the public.
Good evening. Mr. President, members of the city council, for the record, my name is Rich Seipack, and I represent Pyramid Company of Hoyok Inc. with regard to the zone change for the 17.66 acre parcel on the northeast corner of Whitney Ave and Highland Ave to change from Residence A2 to Residence C. You've heard my presentation before, so I'm not going to go over it, because I think we all know what it's all about, but I just want to make a number of points this evening. As you remember, this matter was in front of you in 2021 and early 2022. On March of 24, 2022, you approved my request to withdraw without prejudice, so that we could continue to fine tune the zone change request. And yes, we have done so, and we are continuing to work with the town on a daily basis. With me this evening are Mr. Wayne Zuckerman from Sterling Properties, who has done some incredible projects throughout the entire Northeast. You have a packet in front of you, just outlining some of his project work. It's pretty outstanding. And I would suggest he's here to answer any questions this evening. Also with me is Bill Rogowski, from a former general manager of the Hoyok Mall, and now retired consultant with Pyramid. And also this evening is Mr. Rob Levek from R. Levek Associates, who is currently working closely with Mr. Zuckerman and is working on a definitive site plan. He will address, not in my presentation, because I'm going to keep it brief, but he's here to address any questions regarding the surrounding areas, the topography, and the best designs for the project. By now, everyone in this room is familiar with the project, and what everyone in this room and the council needs to understand is that this is a high-end project that fills a great housing need in the town of West Springfield. West Springfield doesn't have a project anything like this. Many other municipalities around the Northeast do, and there is a need for this type of housing, and that's the first point I wanted to make. And secondly, this is not your traditional, typical residential neighborhood. I looked today, and there are only six total houses in question on Highland Ave that are even impact, even though it's still zone residential. There's six houses. To the south, those are the houses, and they are abutted with a very high hill and a buffer from where our development's going to be. On the north side, you have the Valley View Apartments and the Hoyok Mall. We all know that. The Valley View Apartments are fully occupied, and our apartment complex would be abutting directly to the Valley View Apartments. On the east side, you have the Sisters of Providence, who, after listening to a lot of their commentary over the last two weeks, I would suggest that they're direct competitors, who like the setup that they have on Whitney Ave, but obviously don't like anyone else competing with them next door. As a business owner, I get it, but I just want you to keep in mind the motivation when they're speaking this evening. They talk about how much impact they have on the community, and how much they take from the community, and how great everything is on their side of the street. When it comes time for a high-end, nice project, directly abutting their project, they don't want it. So just keep in mind their motivation. This site itself has been undeveloped, piece of what I'll call scrubland, for the lack of a better word. Get to ask yourself, if you really thought it should stay residential as a residential neighborhood, then why has every residential developer that Pyramid has reached out to in the past 20 years shown zero interest? And Mr. Rogowski has already testified at the prior hearing that they have reached out to every major real estate developer in West Springfield and thereabouts, and not one of them could do anything with this site. It is a very tough piece of scrub property. You may not know, but I represented Pyramid in 1998, some 25 years ago, when Pyramid tried to expand the Hoyok Mall into West Springfield. But at town meeting, the old form of government, we were two votes short of getting the approval. So for the past 25 years, there's been no interest at this site, none, until Mr. Zuckerman, from New Jersey, has come up with a concept that West Springfield has never seen before. Mr. Zuckerman wants to develop a high-end apartment like none other in the area. For the life of me, I don't get why any town wouldn't accept a beautiful project that offers its residents a form of housing that is new, high-end, and a start to improving a tough area in West Springfield. This could be the catalyst that gets the ball rolling. The mayor understands this, and I have been working and talking with the DPW and the Police Department on how we can improve the traffic flow. To highlight some of the changes since we were here last, the first one is to develop no more than 162 units, but it's likely there will be less number of apartments, but we haven't got that definitive number yet. The proposal is 40% of them to be one-bedroom units and 60% to be two-bedroom units. The preliminary draft shows 324 parking spaces, all on grade with a two-to-one parking ratio, and Rob can address any potential modifications thereof. We're now offering perimeter fencing around the entire project, because safety was an issue and the concerns. There will be perimeter fencing around the entire site. There'll be a gated entry, and there'll be FOBs. And on the site, there'll be a pool and a fitness center. Lastly, we move the entire project to the north side of the parcel, that is toward the Hoyok side, so directly above the apartments right next door, and as far away from Highland Ave as possible, so it won't be an impact. We have met with the planning board two weeks ago, and we're going back there tomorrow night, so you don't have the recommendation yet. And tonight, you'll hear one thing over and over and over: traffic, traffic, traffic. But I've been involved in a lot of projects in West Springfield over the years, a lot of big projects, and traffic has always been a problem. But the good news is, it's solvable. It's fixable. We've always been able to fix the traffic situation. What's really interesting is Bill Rogowski is about to share with some very interesting statistics about the total reduction in traffic to the Hoyok Mall in the past 20 years. Due to online shopping, as we all know and live, due to Amazon, and to no one's surprise, the decrease, I'm going to let him give those numbers out, is quite significant. Further, I believe this evening, Mr. Knightley from the DPW will share some traffic counts that he had done in our request, and I have spoken to him directly about that, and he is going to suggest that we go out to get some further engineering proposals to make Whitney a safer travel. Lastly, Pyramid is committed to making financial contributions in conjunction with the zone change. Not many developers are willing to do, not strike that, many landlords are willing to do that. Pyramid is willing to do that. So in summary, this is a great project, and I suggest you ask yourself, if traffic is the only issue you hear about, then you can, with the town and the developer, make this a better project for everyone. This project will add significant tax revenue to the town, and Wayne will explain that the target market for the type of tenant that he's looking for are professionals and retirement community-type individuals, who have very little impact on the school system. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rogowski. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, members of the council, Bill Rogowski, currently a consultant for the Pyramid Companies, 71 Apricot Hill Lane, West Springfield, Massachusetts. As Rich said, I'd like to speak a little bit on traffic, and I don't think these numbers are going to come as a surprise to anyone, anybody pays attention to the news. But we've looked back 20 years, and 20 years ago to now, there's been a total reduction of 20% in the traffic going to the Hoyok Mall, due to customer preferences, shopping habits, whatever. In the last four years alone specifically, it's been 6.5% in just in the last four years. Again, as Rich alluded to, we can thank online shopping for that. We can certainly thank the pandemic for that. If you look at the current makeup of the shopping center today, and these are all things that really point to the fact that the traffic has been reduced. You know, you have one vacant anchor box and the former Sears anchor box, if you include that, there's probably five additional big-box stores totaling 300-plus square feet of vacancy at the shopping center, again, directly relating to less traffic. One of the other things that Pyramid was able to do back in 2019 is they were able to gain some concessions from the anchor stores. From my time in the industry, 19 years, it's virtually impossible to gain concessions from the anchor stores. And by these concessions, I'm talking about parking. The parking ratio initially was 4.5 spaces for 1,000 square feet of GLA, which is gross leasable area. They were able to negotiate that number down to 3.875, which is a total reduction of 1,000 parking spaces at the center. If any of those anchor tenants firmly believed that the traffic was going to come back, and they saw those numbers, the traffic pushing in that direction, they would have never let go of the 1,000 spaces. It's just, you know, it's just unheard of in the industry. Nobody would give up parking. Other traffic things you're going to hear about tonight, everybody's going to talk about the impact of Amazon. If everybody's not familiar with it, Amazon has a remote parking lot at the top of Whitney Avenue across from the Macy's building. They'll talk about driver traffic going to and from the site to get to work and to leave home from work. It's really no different than when the Phoenix Mutual Insurance Company office building was on that location. Same thing. People would go to work, people would go home. It was a three-story, 60,000-square-foot office building. That was torn down. It is now a parking lot that is leased to Amazon. If you watch the flow of the Amazon traffic, when those vans leave the parking lot, they exit on the Macy's side, they turn left on Whitney Avenue, heading west to north, cross Route 91, and aim for Lower Westfield Road, which is the Amazon distribution warehouse. Once the trucks are loaded, some trucks, do they go back down Whitney Avenue? Absolutely. But if you look at the traffic patterns, the trucks go down Homestead, the trucks go down Bolbala to Interstate Drive in West Springfield, the trucks go down Lower Westfield Road, the trucks go down Whiting Farms Road, and the trucks hop on 91 North and 91 South. So, you know, it's spider webs out from there. Is there incremental traffic going down Whitney to Highland? Sure. Is it absorbing all the traffic? Not even close. So, you know, I think right now, again, you know, Rich talked that, you know, we've spoken with Connor, you know, he's commissioning for a study. We're willing to participate in fixing the traffic problem. We're not standing up here and telling you that it's not a highly-traveled road. We understand it's a highly-traveled road, and we're willing to be part of the solution, not just what people perceive to be as just a problem. So, you know, that's, again, I'm going to try and keep it brief, because we've been here before. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Anything else from the petitioner relative to a presentation?
None.
None, okay. All right, so what I'm going to do now is open it up to the public for comments. When I call in, you come up to the microphone, state your name, address, and again, five minutes. Town clerk, who's also our clerk of the council, will be timing you, and he'll ring a bell when your time's up. So hopefully, everybody who wants to speak has prepared their speeches to be efficient, okay? Anyone interested in addressing the council or asking, all right, come on up.
Hi.
And everybody else, I'll pull the microphone, depending on your height, if you're tall or short.
How's that?
Perfect.
Great. Good evening. My name is Tim Smith, 14 Highland Lane, West Springfield. I practice this at home, so it won't take more than five minutes. And I typed it this time, so I don't have to fight my own handwriting. Some of my comments have to do with what transpired a couple weeks ago at a planning board meeting here. There's an interesting statement by the chairman of the planning board that there is no plan, which seemed kind of strange to me, these gentlemen putting together a very detailed plan already, several times. I kind of took that the wrong way, I think. I thought it was an attempt by proponents to decouple our fears and concerns of the abutters, or the residents of the North End. If there's no plan, then there's no cause for concerns. I don't think that's what he meant. But perhaps, when he said there was no plan, there is not a plan, but possibly many plans. If the zoning changes went to 2C, the barn doors opened for many plans, because I think there was a consensus among everybody in the room that this proposal that the team here put together doesn't necessarily need to be followed. They can change it. Also, at that meeting, some on the planning board took exception to citizens at the meeting that stated that those who are in a position of, are in a decision-making power, council members, or the mayor, or planning board members, or gentlemen of the developers team, would not want this project built near where they live. I'm paraphrasing some of my neighbors. I submit that where people live has much to do with this issue. I hope I quote the chairman of the planning board properly. I apologize if he's listening. He said, "It doesn't matter where people live." Well, I respectfully disagree. The only leverage my neighbors and I at the North End of town have, who oppose the plan or the project, is to solicit empathy, not sympathy. We don't want pity. We want empathy, which is a synonym for understanding, understanding of, oops, I lost my place, understanding of the councilors who live a significant distance from the epicenter of the issue here. I'm counting on the title, council at large, having some meaning. And you're all tax-paying, law-abiding citizens, American citizens, just like us. And when you ran for your position to serve, I'm sure you advertised your candidacy at the time as being empathetic in your nature or disposition. I'm confident your life experiences will allow you not to dismiss what some on the planning board think is an irrelevant point. Now, that comes with some responsibility on Wardate's residence part. We need to present ourselves. Don't raise our voices or name-calling or anything like that. So I hope I'm cool so far with everybody. But I'd just like to point out some proposal points that were made by the developers team, if I can use that term generically. The intent, so let me back up a bit. There's been a lot of talk and discussion about what's to be built, and where to be built, and adjustments that have been made, and much of it's, oop, four and a half minutes, but very little discussion on who is going to be there. Now, I know it's a sincere desire by the developers team to have young professionals and retirees, but a neighbor near me brought out the point last meeting, that the 400-pound gorilla in the room here, is the feds and the state are looking for homes for all the new faces that are coming across into our country. That's it, huh?
That's it. Well, if we have time afterwards, you can come up and finish.
Okay, well, thank you.
We'll allow someone else to come up now. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is A.J. O'Donnell, resident taxpayer at 95 Mulcahy Drive here in West Springfield, and I vehemently oppose this zoning change. I think we've got to see the forest through the trees here. This is a masquerade party at best. So on the one hand, you hear from the developers, we're putting in luxury condos or luxury apartments. When I was here a couple of weeks ago, I heard that term so much, I felt like a ping-pong going back and forth. We live in New England. What goes on from Thanksgiving to March in Clement weather? Snow, freezing rain, ice. And what do these places not have? Garages. That's not luxury to me. And I hear about, we're going to bring in young professionals, and we're going to target people over 65 that want luxury. So what are you going to do? Go downstairs, shovel off your car, turn it on, run back inside, and hope it doesn't get stolen while you're inside. Public safety is paramount, and I haven't heard anything about public safety. In my neighborhood, in the last couple of years, we've not had one. we've not had one, not two, but three motor vehicle thefts. So, now we've got that issue. So, now the West Springfield Police, who are stretched thin already, are now, they're going to be running over to the new 160 new luxury apartments for potential thefts. And take a look at the photos of the scheme that's, that's been given to you. What does it really look like to you? Luxury? Well, I hail from Hoyok, and I can tell you what it looks like to me. It looks like the Whiting Farms development next to JP's Restaurant, where we seem to have a lot of problems. Public safety is paramount. I've heard zilch, zero, about public safety. When I was here a couple of weeks ago, I, I heard our Chairman, he was going to lecture one of, one of our residents when he made a remark about, well, you know, what's going to be the impact to the town? And he said, "Well, there's going to be extra tax hours." Okay, so how many new police cars are we getting? How many new ambulances? It's all speculative. But we do know there's been an uptick in crime in those areas along Piper and Bernie. Now, you're going to bring in 160 new apartments. So, they're going to be luxury. Now, I'm a businessman, just like my colleague, Mr. Sypek, and we all like to see our coffers grow. So, you've got some guy down in New Jersey that's going to build this, and I assume management is going to collect the rents. You've got to rent those places to make ends meet. What happens when you don't find that wealthy 65-year-old guy? What happens when you don't find that young professional? Because he says, "I'm going to Long Metal. This is too close to that, that place on the Hoyok side by the mall, and I don't, I don't like the characters there." So, what are you going to do? Just leave it vacant and say, "Well, maybe some, you know, some guy from DC will show up and rent this place. Or maybe some kid from Boston will move out here and want to live over here." You're not doing that. You're renting that to the first person that shows up, and you don't care where the dough comes from and who they are. So, understand, public safety is paramount to me. And this, this other thing I've heard about where there's no traffic, there's plenty of traffic. There's plenty of traffic right now. And what do you think is going to happen when those 160 new luxury apartments come in? People are going to pull out, they're going to look down the hill and say, "Oh, man, there's way too much traffic down there. I'm going to go the other way." So, now they're going across Bernie. Now, they're going across Piper. Traffic is going to escalate. The roads are only so big. And I don't think we're putting in big overpasses in West Springfield, like any, some big development. Public safety is my concern, and I haven't heard anything about that. So, I strongly oppose this. And if they go, you should sit back and think about that and reject this zoning change. And let me leave you with one other thing in the back of your mind. And again, you know, people are going to make some great remarks about all the plans we haven't heard because they need the zoning change first. If they don't get the zoning change, don't spend the dough. It's common sense. But they get the zoning change, maybe they don't do it. But you gave the ticket to Pyramid to sell that to whoever they want. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you, President Sullivan and council members. I am Anne Chapdeline. I am the Chief Operating Officer for the Sisters of Providence Ministry Corporation. I have a letter here that was written by our President Sister Kathleen Popko that I'm going to read for you all. But I just wanted to address one comment that Attorney Sypek made. We are not in competition with luxury apartment buildings. We have senior living communities. We have Mary's Meadow. We've also been really transparent about the amount of traffic that comes from our campus. With all due respect, 150 years, we were there first. So, we are joining with many other concerned residents of the area in objecting to this zone change. The Pyramid Corporation's petition for a zone change to multifamily will alter the character of the single-family neighborhood and exacerbate the existing issues, including a narrow road stressed with high-volume traffic, a hazardous intersection, and more. At the meeting of the Town Planning Board, January 4, 2023, the room was filled with residents and organizations describing the current situation related to Whitney Avenue and Highland Avenue. The volume of cars currently on Whitney Avenue already is beyond capacity. The narrow road is filled daily with high-volume Ingleside Mall traffic and Amazon Prime vehicles from a site adjacent to the Ingleside Mall, as well as, we haven't talked about this yet, but a training venue for drivers of 18-wheeler trucks and buses in an adjacent former mall parking lot. Add to this volume, the cars from the 72 units, approximately 160 people from, excuse me, 155 people from Valley View Apartments and those from Providence Place and Mary's Meadow paints a worrisome picture for too many cars on a narrow roadway not designed for such use. Clearly, this road currently is saturated with vehicles. Multiple residents expressed fear over the intersection of Whitney and Highland Avenue and described the near misses and accidents there. This intersection will not be fixed by a stop sign, as Pyramid Attorney seemed to suggest in his testimony a few weeks ago. These existing conditions of a narrow road, high volume of cars, hazardous intersection, beg to be remedied now regardless of a zone change. To add to these problems, by approving a multifamily zone change that in the proposed example, use may add 162 units with over 346 cars is not the best interest of the neighborhood's safety and well-being. The already burdened road will be overwhelmed with the proposed volume increases anticipated by the zoning change to multifamily. The property itself is questionable for use as a multifamily site. According to the Department of Public Works Water Division report, the site was used as a, and I quote, "sandpit quarry" that was filled in by the Hoyok Mall project some 25 years ago. The report goes on to say that questions that this landfill would be suitable for construction of any type. And the Pyramid Attorney indicated that soil and other studies are underway, implying that there are issues with the land that may require reduction in size of the project. But if you examine the petitioner's current map of how the property will be utilized, which I have, this packet was handed out a couple of weeks ago, reveals that the construction of the building is now crowded near the northern, the northern edge in a line. And in the only solid ground there's, I guess the question is, is that the only solid ground for construction? It appears also in the drawing that more than three-quarters of the site is now devoted to being parking lots. This is vastly different map than what was presented last year at this time, and it supports the concerns articulated in the DPW report cited above. If the complex is built, will the ground beneath the new project begin to shift in a few years, leading to cracks or damage to the building's structure? Raises serious questions about the suitability of the site for a multifamily zoning. In addition, these concerns raise further question of who shall benefit from this project and who does not. Definitely, the Pyramid Corporation benefits.
Five minutes comes quick, doesn't it?
It does. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anyone else want to address the council? Oop, didn't see your hand, sorry. It's a sea of color out there.
Hi, Gina Kelly, 163 Highland Ave. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I did write an email, which, thank you. Some of you replied to me, and I appreciate it. I do have some questions. I'm not going to complain about the traffic, the safety, or the crime, because I think we've heard all that. And of course, I agree with everything everybody said. My question is, what is the town going to do to hold Pyramid Company accountable to their high-end plans? Can I get an answer on that tonight?
No. No, just so you know, if, if this did pass, it would go back to the planning board for, you know, site review and restrictions. So, it would go back to the planning board for their, it'd be under their jurisdiction.
And will there be another public meeting for that?
No.
Also, Resident A to Resident C seems like a downgrade. How is this going to impact our property values? Can I get an answer on that tonight?
Oh, that would be tough. That would be something for the accessor. I mean, it's, it's hard to answer that from sitting here.
So, I'd like you all just to put yourself in our position. If we're going to go from Resident A to Resident C, and our property values are going to be impacted, would you want this in your neighborhood? Probably not. Also sidewalks, we see wheel, electric wheelchairs, people going up and down electric wheelchairs. And mothers pushing baby carriages up that hill. There's no sidewalks. When are we going to have some sidewalks? But it should have happened before. Is this going to allow us to implement some sidewalks and traffic lights?
Well, it's interesting you said that. We had a conversation with the town engineer that he indicated that there would have to be sidewalks put in there in order for the project to go forward. That would certainly be one of the conditions.
So, there's only going to be sidewalks probably on one side because the other side, there's no room.
Well, again, it's premature for me to say. It's, I'm not in planning, I'm not in engineering. But all I can tell you is the town engineer said that there would be sidewalks.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry about that, but hopefully I answered some of your questions. Anyone else want to address the council? All right, come on up.
Yes, hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Fred Connor of Overlord Drive. Let it be entered into the record that I am opposed to the zone change. Just to begin by saying that MG Mass General Law's Chapter 40 states that zoning ordinances are to regulate the use of land, buildings, and structures of cities and towns to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants. My, my view is that, and I'm sure it's shared by others here in the room, is that the proposed zoning change would not do that, would not protect, but rather place at risk the health and safety and welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the, of the town. And for the reasons, some of which have already been stated, not to be too redundant here, but certainly it's going to alter the, the character of the neighborhood from single-family to neighborhood apartment rentals. And I just cite the statistic that West Springfield rental housing is 43% now. It prompts me to wonder, what is our threshold and going forward? And let's see, you know, we're talking about 360 more vehicles potentially in the, in the, to further congest the roadway there, not to mention overcrowding in the classrooms and, and other hazards, safety hazards as well on Route 5, the intersection and there that's been problematic for a long time, particularly in light of some of the, well, one of the most recent developments or incidents that we're, we're very much painfully aware of, of the pedestrian hit in the crosswalk recently on Piper Road. But also is the concern about crime and drug trafficking and, and other problems that you would associate with subsidized housing and transit apartment dwellers with a lack of pride of ownership. And I look at that in the, from a lens of what's happening statewide and also at a national level with the, you know, avalanche of migration across the southern border, as well as the, the current governor's mandate for affordable housing across the state. And that's implications for our town. One thing that I mentioned at the planning board meeting is that Pyramid has touted this as a luxury apartment. And, and that they, the people that will be moving in will be working from home. You know, I cite other statistics that show that the trend is away from working from home after the pandemic, that employees are more productive working in an office space. But beyond that, I cite an item that I pulled at random on the internet, basically, of a Sterling property in New Jersey where the resident comments about this, her experience there, saying that they fell in love with the property when they moved in, but were quickly disappointed when they found the gym was closed two months with no amenity fee reimbursements. The apartment appliances and paint on the walls were cheap. Our cabinet door in the bathroom suddenly came off. The paint on the walls were easily damaged, and one touch on the shower faucet broke. And I was, when I was taking a shower, bedroom door constantly became loose and squeaky. There's enough, enough guest parking, and et cetera, et cetera. The elevator's broken, and you can hear people walking above you, and it's, and so on. But so, that's, I want to mention that. Also, I would have some questions of the Pyramid people. And number one, is there an executed PNS agreement subject to zone change? Does anyone know that? And is it a leasehold or it's going to be a purchase agreement? I think that's something we ought to know, and the, certainly the town council ought to know. Is there a fully-developed site plan? We've seen a site plan, but it's not fully developed. I'd like to see that. And another point that they've made in the past, a year ago, they said that there was a geotechnical soil test that was completed, some minor, minor investigations. We have not seen a copy of that report. They reiterated the planning board meeting a couple of weeks ago, again, that it was completed. When I called the town council's office this morning, there was no, there was, there was no evidence of that report being submitted. I'd like to know if there was an impact study of 50- or 100-year flood on that parcel. The water usage, there's a concern. Town limit is 219,000 gallons a day of drinking water. New construction will consume more than 21,000 gallons a day or 9.6% of available drinking water, not including wastewater, waste of water on lawn irrigation. So, so anyways, I, I'll, time's running short.
So, what I'll do is I'll try to get you answers to those questions. They'll be recorded in the minutes, and then we can report out to those questions the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? In the back, way in the back. Oop, wait a minute, you've been trumped.
I'm vertically challenged. My name is Sister Mary Caritas. I'm a Sister of Providence, and I have lived at what is now Providence Place and formerly our mother house since 1969. I remember very, very clearly the building of the mall and how they were going to be wonderful neighbors and do all of this. The, the area was going to be all gardens and lovely. They made all these promises to us. But I don't think they've been very good neighbors in the sense that now that they have this big area where they teach men how to drive trucks, and if you know, that is sitting on a lot of methane. At the corner of that, there is a big tube. And every so often, you have to turn that off because underground is full of methane. So, this is not really a good neighbor to any of us. And I think the other thing that I'm concerned about is that they, that piece of property doesn't own, owe the Hoyok Mall anything. They bought that back before they built the mall at a very low price. I don't remember the numbers, but I do remember hearing it at the time. They took all the fill out. Instead of going out and buying fill, they just dug it out of there and used it for the mall. So, it has to, it was for that purpose, and that purpose has been solved. The other question I, the other concern I have is what it's going to do to the town of West Springfield. These are going to be upscale, young apartments. None of them have elevators, so you know they're going to be all young people because people who are my age don't want to live on the third floor. And so, it's going to impact both public safety and your school system. And I'm concerned that making a zone change of this nature is a serious matter. And I really want all of us to consider the seriousness of the matter because once it's changed, it's changed. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Good evening. Frank Plangi, 1320 Morgan Road, West Springfield. I had absolutely no intentions of speaking tonight, but there's been a couple of things that might be a little bit misleading. Few people in the audience made some comments of what was said at the last planning board meeting and absolutely were said. But unfortunately, they just don't understand the process. And what I'm speaking of is basically the answer you, Gavin, when you said there wouldn't be another public hearing. We all need to understand this is a zone change. It has nothing to do with a site plan. All the traffic issues, the sidewalks, the security, all that stuff can be addressed again at a site plan. And yes, it is a public hearing where everybody can speak. So, I don't know if you misunderstood the question or if I heard him wrong, but no, this is not the last public hearing. This is only for the zone change. This is only for the zone change. And when a site plan officially gets presented, then there will be a complete series of public hearings and whatever is needed to move forward from there.
Right, I meant that this was the last public hearing for the council.
Okay. But he had asked when it comes, you had said it went back to the planning board, and then someone said, is there another public hearing? And it said no. So I misunderstood what you said or whatever. I just want it clear that again, this is just for a zone change, and there's plenty of time for all the traffic, the sidewalks, and all the school concerns and everything else. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Having not previously spoken?
Mr. President, Council? My name is Roy Britton. I live at 494 Whitney Avenue. I have bought the Holyoke Mall and United Tractor Trailer School. I think Mr. Rogowski knows who I am. A few years back, I woke up in the morning with trailer trucks in my backyard. So I waited a couple of days because I thought maybe they were working on the lot they were supposed to be in. Lo and behold, they weren't, they were there permanently. So I called Mr. Rogowski about it, and he apologized for not letting me know about it, which I thought was really appalling. I've been up there since 1971. I've seen a lot of changes. And doing business with the Pyramid Brothers is not very favorable with me. They told me before the first expansion, get ready to move. We're coming in December and we're going to make you an offer you can't refuse. Okay? So I did. We got ready, me and my wife. Lo and behold, February rolls around. I call the mall and John Mason, who was the project manager up there, he says, well, I'll be down to show you the plans. I goes, good. He come down and on our dining room table, he rolled out the plans of the mall expansion. Where does that leave us? We're not interested. That's what I got. So you know how I feel about Pyramid Brothers, right? Okay, traffic, you'll hear about traffic until the cows come home because I hear traffic every night when the mall closes. They're going from 40 miles an hour to 80 miles an hour. What that road needs, first of all, are speed bumps and big speed bumps. You get these cars with the custom exhaust that sounds like they're drive-by shooting. And that's not fair to people like us, and you're going to get it down on Highland Avenue too, I'm sure. You're going to slow the traffic down. That's one of my pet peeves. I got pictures falling off the walls because of these guys coming down. I've already had two main water breaks in front of my house. They're not supposed to have any trailer trucks from the United Tractor Trailer School go by my house, which they continue to do. Nobody does anything about that. I've got litter blown into my yard from the United Tractor Trailer School. I have to call and have it removed. And then when Jeff Basil moved in from Amazon, what a joke. He's the richest guy in the world, right? So he put a fence around it, they put shrubs. Well, right now, all the shrubs are dead because of the salt content. Somebody drove last November, somebody drove a car through the fence, and it's still like that. It's pathetic. All the money that guy's got, he can't fix the fence? Now you've got people that are employed by Amazon. If you go down and look at the parking lot, they got kids' recreational toys and stuff. They got basketball hoops. I've seen one guy, he's got a charcoal broiler out there and he's cooking hamburgs. I don't know if it's zoned for that, you know? They've got two ecology cans there. One of them's had the door open all week. What gives there? If they're having it cleaned out or what, but it's got to stop. One of my main concerns, though, is drugs. Now, we all know the locations. We all know about Tokne Road in Holyoke. We all know about Value Apartments across from me. We all know about 480 down the bottom of the hill. We all know about Bob's Court. They've all been investigated for drugs. I went and I had an audience with one of the detectives in Holyoke. You know what he ended up telling me? I says, you got a problem across the street from my house. You got cars from Vermont and Connecticut on a Friday night. It's like a carousel. It's pathetic. And they're not there to visit. They all stop at the same apartment and they're gone within 10 minutes. So, four and a half, half a minute. Yeah, now I lost my train of thought. Well, I had an audience with a detective. You know what he had to call to tell me? They got guns. Well, what does a cop got? So, yeah. I don't care what kind of apartments you're going to build there, you're going to have problems with drugs. And unless you stop it, I know me and my wife were opposed to the zoning change. That's all I got to say. I got other things, but I could go on for a half hour.
Anyone else? Got some celebrity guests tonight.
Mike Brizel, 197 Bonnie Bay Drive. My major concern is utilities, specifically water usage. If we're going to add that many units at the far end of the line, it's going to cause a serious problem for the people that are just up the line to have water pressure, sufficient water pressure. It's already low in that section of town. I don't know how many people live in that area of town. It's very low. I tried getting sprinklers put in. The guy said 32 PSI. What are you, crazy? You don't have a chance. You'll need seven zones in your, to drive in your yard because you can only get three on a line. So utilities, I don't know how many people drive by that intersection at Highland and Prospect, but I think Verizon's got a concession stand going on somewhere right next to the Old H Home because there's a van there two or three days every week. There's something going on. I'm worried about the towns stretching themselves too thin with fire. You put 100 and 160 units up there, that's a lot of people. And I also agree that high-end apartments at the crossroads of 90, 91 in Holyoke Mall does not seem like a great spot for people to drop $300, $400,000 in a condo, especially when it's all it's going to have around it is concrete or pavement. So I'm just concerned that if, once the zone gets changed, plans come off the table and new plans come down. Everybody who lived through the Riverdale Shops knows that the intended use of that site was for a travel center. That was gone two months after the zone change went through. The next thing you know is we've got the Riverdale Shops and then Costco, then Home Depot, and the traffic's terrible, day and night. They were worried about dog track having traffic coming and going. Now the traffic is there nonstop, 24/7. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? Just so everyone knows, as you come on up, but as you're coming up, I just want to let everybody know that council will not be voting on this tonight. We'll be waiting for the recommendation from the planning board, so.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Buckley. I live at 118 Bonnie Bay Drive. And I just wanted to bring a few things up with water. The amount of water that these apartments would be taking is a big drain on West Springfield. And I used to live in Holyoke and the water department in Holyoke, because of all of the buildup in Western, West Holyoke, they had to put four big tank, water tanks out in Ashley Reservoir. Very unsightly when the foliage is off the trees, but they've got four big tanks up there because of the issue with water. Putting a fence up around the parking lot does nothing to be dealing with noise that would be coming out from that place. I'd also like to know how many calls that the police department have had to the Valley View Apartments over there because I've heard there's been a lot of issues in those apartments. And when they talk about a traffic study, I'd be curious to know if they ever did a traffic study during the holiday season, as per maybe between Thanksgiving and Christmas or New Year's. Because the traffic backs up way, way back on Riverdale Street, back beyond the overpass where people go to get onto 90 and 91. It is extremely difficult to get down to those lights and then to turn onto Whitney to get to Prospect, which gets me to where I live. But the traffic is terrible, and I don't know whether they've ever done a study at high tide or high, not a professional speaker.
Okay.
At a high volume, at high volume times when the mall is very busy. And I have been over to the mall, I walk at the mall, I'm a mall walker. And during the holiday season, they can say what they want, but those parking lots are pretty darn full. So trying to turn, trying to turn off Prospect and take a left to go up to the Holyoke Mall during a lot of top parts of the year, very difficult. So, oh, and one other thing is that the Sisters of Providence that are over there, they have a lot of clients over there that are elderly, and they have elderly visitors. And when you have cars racing down that street and elderly people trying to go in and out of where the clients are, it's very nerve-wracking for older people to hear, to hear the noise, to hear the boom boxes coming out of the cars. You know, it gives, it gives seniors a scare. So there's lots of things that I don't think have been brought up about that. So I just wanted to bring those points up as well. And one more thing, because I haven't gotten beeped yet. I grew up in Holyoke. My dad was a firefighter in Holyoke. And they built, and I'm not going to say it's, it was a high-end project, but they built a project called Boden Village up just off Jarvis Avenue up there. And they brought clientele into that place. And it's more of what people would refer to now as projects. And nobody that lives in a single-family home want to be around projects because there's nothing but trouble there. So I just wanted to bring those things up. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if you haven't previously spoken, come on up.
My name is Maria Santana. I live at 240 Prospect Ave. I was not intending on coming up and speaking tonight, so I did not prepare anything. But as a mother of two children that live there, I can tell you right now, I'm scared every single time. They're 14 and they're 16. One of them just has got his license, and coming out of my, out of Prospect is very bad. And we have a lot of people that race up and down the street, up on Babola, that industrial Ave over there, and it is heavily, heavily congested. And not only that, the police and the ambulance are always down at Valley View, and nobody's mentioned this evening, the nursing home. And so if we keep congesting that area, we are also interfering with the police and the firefighters and ambulance to come up that area, especially for the nursing home up over there too. They're over there a lot for the residents over there, but we are just, we're very congested. I know you've heard it all night, but not just car traffic. We also have a lot of foot traffic. And late at night, sometimes you're driving and there's people in hoodies, and you don't even see them sometimes. There's no sidewalks and they're coming up and down Prospect, and all of a sudden they're right there. So I know as a mother, I am concerned about my children coming out from that area because it is, it's very heavy and it's hard to get out of down on the end of Prospect, turning right or left. And there's just a lot of, there's already a lot of traffic. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who hasn't spoken want to address the council? All right, you're up.
Before we start the clock, could I just get a little bit of clarification on how this is going to work? Mr. Chairman, President, you mentioned that, sorry. Mr. President, you mentioned that if we speak here, we're prohibited now from speaking at a future.
No, no, that's not what I said, as long as you don't repeat the same thing at the following, if there's a continuation of public hearing, we don't want to hear the same thing at the next session.
Very good, thank you. John Wazlowski, Sisters of Providence Ministry Corporation at 200 Hillside Circle, which is off of Riverdale Road. It's an interesting geographic location for an apartment complex that was already mentioned. But I would like to note that it seems that that north section of Route 5 is something that has, I think, over 10 complexes within one mile radius, about 20 complexes of apartment, apartments within a two-mile radius. And I will say that most of that type of congregate living is experiencing some type of safety as well as social issues that, as the Holyoke Police Department indicated, they have five times as many calls for the apartment complex that's going to be within 100 yards of this proposed Pyramid Project versus some of their, the majority of the other complexes that they have in the city of Holyoke. And as a fence, really, I don't think is going to have any restraints on it. Traffic was mentioned, so I won't go into that. I would like to address some of the infrastructure issues. Water was, I think, adequately addressed. The gas company right now is marking up the road, Highland and Whitney, to do some renovations on the current gas lines there. Again, gas, which I'm assuming is going to be the primary fuel for heating, is now restricted. There was another complex on the Holyoke side where a gentleman from West Springfield purchased a site and found out he couldn't get enough gas in there for his housing project. All these things are, that fire department, we estimate it's about 12 to 15-minute response time for the fire department, for the police department from their current location. Is it going to necessitate building additional facilities for that? Same thing with the power lines. What kind of extension is going to happen there? And who is going to pay for that? Pyramid basically said you're going to have additional tax revenue. Nothing about the burden. And usually in investigating these types of projects, the developer also will ask the town for certain tax breaks and capital contributions or projects. They offered to put up the stop sign at the last meeting, but it's going to be very one-sided as to how much the city of West Springfield is going to bear in capital and other spending. Now, it was said that the mayor was in favor of this.
We never said that.
Okay. Well, that was a selling point by Pyramid in the past, and I guess that may not be true.
I'm just speaking for the council.
It's already mentioned about the garages. My daughter had a four, fourth-floor apartment. Let me tell you, qualified, need to run a marathon based on doing those stairs. So that's already been mentioned. Another example to show what absentee ownership does, the city of Springfield. Another example to show what absentee ownership does, the city of Springfield had some major transactions where investors from New York, New Jersey came in and bought out hundreds of the apartment complexes. If you watch Channel 22 or 40 investigative reporting, most of those are now in response to complaints from residents in those apartments. We're not getting heat. We have water coming down. The plumbing is going. The doors need to be safe enough so we can lock and feel comfortable at night. That is absentee ownership management. When you look at Sterling corporations, the sites, the ones that do publish their ratings or Google comments, they're three and a half. Even Amazon, with all the complaints noted here, is closer to four and five and everything they sell. But it's consistent with Sterling that they're in middle of the road at best. So these are some of the points that West Springfield has already had to bear the expense of by having Pyramid as a neighbor and now they're going to be directly responsible for covering. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think there was a gentleman all the way in the back wall. Somebody, did somebody get cut off? Somebody in the back? No? Okay. Go ahead, come on up. Oh, there he is. Third time's a charm.
Hi, my name is John Breard, B-R-E-A-R-D. I live at 35 Freida Street, F-R-E-I-D-A. And I would like to make a statement that my wife and I are against this development. We, our recent transplants to West Springfield, I graduated from the University of Maine in 2014. Our first apartment down here was a long distance landlord and he owned one apartment building and whenever something went wrong, just trying to get him to fix it was very tough. Usually it turned out to, hey, I'll knock $300 off the rent if you take care of it for me, which I appreciated, but also that I'm stuck going to Home Depot, trying to find the right parts. So I, I, I think he made out on that deal in the end. So I, I question how good a long distance landlord would be for 162 units. And when we first moved down here as a recent college graduate, something similar to dorm living was not very high on my list as a working professional. I work at a company that employs over 600 people, all working professionals. I'd say probably 33% are within five years of graduation. I don't think they want to go back to a dorm either. So I questioned the luxury portion of this project. I questioned the working professionals that would be found to live there. And then I also questioned the retirees that would want to live there. My parents are approaching retirement. They have yet to say, hey, let's move to Massachusetts when we retire into a building that looks like a dorm. Everyone that I talked to here that is here, being West Springfield, that is also looking to retire, doesn't want to live on the third floor of a building. They don't want to live with a bunch of other people running around making noise. They want a quiet place to live. So I, I really don't see the clientele that they're proposing is going to be there. I'm a frequent attendee of the Holyoke Mall. I wouldn't say I'm a frequent customer. I do walk there a lot after work just to get my steps in. And I question a corporation that cannot keep the escalators working at one location. To be in charge, to be in charge of 162 apartments. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're, yep, come on up.
That's a tough one to follow. But I'm Walt Suzuka. I live at 290 Quarry Road. And I'd just like to say that my wife and I and many of our neighbors are opposed to this. And from what I've been listening tonight, I don't have anything prepared or written, but it's very interesting to hear someone say, well, the traffic has been down 20% or it's been down 4% or in the last so many years. That person hasn't traveled 90, Route 91 to Route 9, to Route 5 North and taken a left onto Highland for 20 years like my wife and I have. That intersection is horrible. Many times you back up, as it was mentioned earlier, past where the collection lane is and you're sitting just praying that the person coming behind you is looking and doesn't rear end you because you're waiting to take a left and that collection lane is not long enough. Not to mention the number of people who will get in the right hand lane, take a right into the motel, go down the side street and come back up at the light to go straight across so they can beat waiting three, four, or five times for that left hand arrow to turn. So the area, you need more than just numbers here. You have to look at people who travel, and I know they said 20 something percent again. It's, that doesn't matter. Travel that hundreds of times for over 20 years and tell me that there's not a traffic issue there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does everybody, everybody bent to their microphone? Well, I think we have someone who hasn't spoken in the back, right?
Thank you. My name is Louis Gentile. Live on Tatum Hill Road. As I listen to the proposal from the developer, I feel like we're being treated as though we're pretty dumb. What they're asking for is total freedom to do what they want to do with no restrictions from the town. We have no idea how many apartment units they're going to build. We have no idea how many bedrooms are going to be included, how many apartments have one bedroom, two bedrooms, or three, or more. Obviously, the more bedrooms you have, you're going to fill, young couples are going to fill them. So we're going to have many more young children if this proposal goes through. That means we're going to have to build another grammar school. What I see is the developer skimming money, taking it out of town, and we're left with increased taxes. We're going to have to build a new school, going to have to then give salaries to all the persons who become associated with the school, all the teachers, the cafeteria workers, the maintenance workers, the, the men who work outside the building, keep it up to date. So our taxes are going to go up and those tax increases are not going to stop. I think, when's the last time we had a tax reduction? Not in my lifetime, I think. So that's a major concern. The, they're in the, the company is in the business of putting up apartment buildings and renting them out. That's their source of income. They keep talking about high end units. I don't know what a high end unit is. They've never said. Is a high end unit something that has a rent of $1,500 a month? $3,500 a month? They don't tell us that. So if they're not able to rent these high end fancy apartments, they're not going to leave them vacant. They're going to find somebody who will move in. And those somebodies will very likely be subsidized housing. So we're going to have subsidized housing in these fancy apartments. We're going to be paying Pyramid to take money out of town while our expenses continue to go up every year. They're pretty vague. They don't really give us any specifics. Maybe if they came up with a firm description of what they're going to do, how many apartments, what's the rent going to be? How many bedrooms are we going to be dealing with? This is a one way deal for them. They take money out of town. We keep paying more and more in taxes to subsidize Pyramid. It would be a little different perhaps if they said they would build the school since the kids who go to the school in this new school will come from their project. So maybe they should build the school. Maybe they should come up with four or five thou, five, $5 million a year to the town to help defray some of the expenses. And the expenses are many. Going to have to buy new trucks, going to have to buy more plows, going to have to have more police, more teachers. And those expenses are not going to go away. So my suggestion is before we approve of this, because we don't really know what we're approving, that they come back with firm definitions of what they plan to do. Then we can look at it realistically. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, gentleman in the back.
Well, thank you. Thomas Smith, 211 Apronmont Highway, Holyoke. I was here two weeks ago at the planning board meeting. And at the meeting, I sort of thought, you know, the city of, or the town of West Springfield made a good decision a while ago to zone this land for single family units. And when the project proponent discussed his proposal, he talked, he added a lot of details about the project. For one, one thing I noticed from last year was the increase in parking spaces in the plan that's not to scale yet. So he's had a year to refine the plan and he says he's fine tuned it, but the only thing the public has seen is an eight and a half by 11 color diagram of a plan that even says not to scale. Well, last year he added like 62 parking spaces. This year it's 324. Well, thank goodness, they increased the parking spaces to a realistic number. So if, I do landscape design work. And if I propose to somebody a low number, like 62 parking spaces for 100 something units, and then I came back and said, oh, it's really 324, they wouldn't trust me. Or they'd question me further. So all the people here I think are asking is that you question and really look closely at things. And the planning board chair, and I didn't speak at the planning board meeting. A lot of people did. A lot of people that spoke here tonight have spoken, had spoke two weeks ago. And they talked about the details of the plan. And the details they talked about were only the details that were brought to the public by the project proponent. So those details were on the table as far as the public was concerned. And the planning board chair said, if anyone else talks about the details of the plan, project, they'll be cut off. Because he said, quote, "There is no project." Tonight, he said, he said, "There is no plan." But that's not what he said. He said, "There is no project." So then that begs the question, why is the city even considering a zone change if there is no project? Even tonight, the project proponent talked about details of a project, yet two weeks ago, the planning board at the public hearing said, "If you talk about the project, I'll cut you off." He didn't say the plans, like he said tonight. He said, he said the plans. He didn't say that. He said the project. So there's no project? Why is the planning board considering a massive thing? A zone change is not something minor. Zone changes are changes to the city plans. They are changes to the people who went before you who thought what the best use of that land was. And they handed it off to you and the planning board. And now with, if there's no project, why are you even considering that? And if there is a project, which we really think there is, right? If there is a project, why did the planning board chair threaten to cut people off if they spoke about details of the project? And the fine tuning that is the project proponent claims that has been done in a year? The fine tuning is a perimeter fence and the appropriate number of parking spaces. They've had a year and that's all they've shown? That's all they're willing to show? They got to hold more cards than that and they're not showing them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't previously spoken? I see some couple of young ladies in the back to my left.
I'm going to use up one of my couple of minutes here on this issue because I'm very One of the things that I noticed is that nobody's talking about the sewage and drainage issues that are all along that area. One of the things I'd like to point out is that there's actually a guy who goes around with a garden rake in West Springfield and rakes off the sewer drains all along Route 5 in the area where he's speaking of. He gets like three, he has 3.4 million views about cleaning the water off of West Springfield with a garden rake. Nobody's talking about what 162 units will do with that. We already have enough impervious paving. We have enough water issues. We have safety issues that I'd like to speak of that aren't already being addressed in town. I don't know why we're making more problems. Thank you.
Linda, looks like you got beat to the microphone, but why'd you wait up in the queue? No, that's all right, go ahead.
Sure. Hi, my name is Nancy Gara. I live on Prospect Avenue. And I just had three points to make. One of the things that the gentleman, whose name I don't remember, but his name, he's a landscaper, he said, he asked the council to question. So I have three questions for you. One is, once the zone is changed, can it be rescinded? Second thing is, and I know I'm using a terrible T word, but traffic. Someone said that it's easily solvable. I believe it was Mr. Saipack. And I wondered how we would define easily solvable. Solu, salva, whatever.
Okay, we get, we understand.
Solvable, there's the word.
There you go.
And the third thing is, Mr. Saipack also referred to something that I found strange. And I wondered if perhaps someone can explain it to me. He said at one point, towards the end of his speech, that the mayor has agreed to the project already? Or that he's approved the project already? I'm not sure which word he used.
Yeah, well, he's, he's not involved in the process right now. It's the planning board and the council. The mayor's not involved at this point.
Okay.
He might have an opinion, but that's not what's before us this evening.
Okay. Okay. Well, there's one out of three.
There you go. Well, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Solicitor Janet. So once a zone change is made, can it, another zone change be made years later?
I mean, I think that would deal with the specifics, whether there was a petition brought forth again. Zone chains require a two thirds amendment, a two thirds vote of the council to change the zone in question. That would require six councils' votes. So it really would be dependent on the specifics of, is the zone changed years down the road? Is it, it really is a case by case basis of whether the, why the zone would be changed.
Okay. And what was your second question?
The other one was that he had mentioned the traffic and a couple, or one other person, I think, mentioned that the traffic problems were easily solvable. And I wondered... And I wondered how he would define that easily part. Or anyone would define that easily part.
I don't think anything's easy. I mean, if that was the word used. But unless Attorney Sypek wants to address that question. There's a microphone right there.
We're waiting with the DPW to have a study done. And they will come up with a proposal. We are waiting with the DPW, in conjunction with the DPW, to have a study done, to come up with any proposal that they suggested that would work to make that, that road fixable.
Okay. There's your answer.
Sorry, I'm a little confused and dubious. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Linda Perrin, 11 Belmont Avenue. I don't live in the area, but I am a retiree. And my friends are all retirees. And not one of them is going to sell their home with a garage to move into a high-end apartment. My second point is, I've lived in this town longer than all of you have been alive. And I can say that with certainty. And I remember a kinder time when elected officials cared about our neighborhoods and our residents. And I'm asking you to do that again. Thank you.
Okay. Has anybody else not addressed the council? Okay, come on up.
Mike Orte, 133 Highland Avenue. I live right across from that intersection. And I can tell you with certainty that it is a problem now. And whatever 20% reduction was spoken about in the traffic was based on something that was too high to begin with. 24% reduction of something that's far too heavily trafficked is not much of a reduction at all. I was born and raised there and currently living there for 30 years. And I can tell you that Pyramid is not a good neighbor. You know, you can, one gentleman spoke about the elevators that don't work in their own property. Take a look at the road around their property. They were built on a dump site. They're shifting all over the place. And I'm not sure that it won't happen in this project as well. That's basically it. I'm planned on speaking. But I should let you know that a resident of that specific intersection, I've seen a lot of accidents, near accidents. The town put up a guardrail in front of my neighbor's house. And that was actually circumvented and their house was hit. So I don't know how to easily improve safety as the gentleman suggested. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else hasn't spoken yet?
Patrick Argwin, the administrator at Mary's Meadow. I'm the facility, skilled nursing facility across the street from, from this proposal. I'd like to leave you with three questions. One, if Pyramid has been doing testing on the site since February 7, 2022, what are the results of those soil samples and that testing? Secondly, why has no local developer purchased or made proposals to purchase this property? And thirdly, if this proposal for apartment zoning change is true and accurate, might there be another tent proposals coming our way as soon as a zoning change is conducted? So leaving you with those thoughts. And I appreciate, and speak for the crowd, I believe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else up in the back?
My name is Christine Bisnary. I live at 17 Highland Lane. I just have a question. Has this property already been purchased?
Been purchased?
Purchased. Paid for.
Sypek, this is owned by Pyramid, is it not? So they bought it like, I don't know, 30 years ago or something?
Because the sign still remains there, land for sale. And I just had a question that, you know, is it all, you know, going to be forgotten? You know, if the zone change doesn't go through?
I can't speak for the Pyramid Corporation.
So it is purchased by them?
They've owned it for decades.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Sypek, is that correct? They've owned it for decades? Yes, they have done it for decades. They've been trying to sell it for decades, too. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Oh, in the middle, here we go.
Dave Banus, 78 Carey Lane, West Springfield. President Sullivan, councilors. There's one thing we haven't talked about here. That Pyramid is wanting to put in over there any so-called luxury apartments. That's a swimming pool. Everybody loves to go swimming in the summertime when it's 100 degrees outside. I do. I imagine everybody else does, too. The problem we have here with the swimming pool is can you get a certified lifeguard to watch it? And who is going to be in that pool? Are they going to be residents? Are they going to be visitors? How do you control the people who go in these pools? Now, I got another situation. A disabled child goes in to take a swim. The disabled child drowns. Who is going to pay the lawsuit for this? Is it going to be West Springfield? Is it going to be Pyramid? Or is it going to be the so-called professionals that live in these apartments? I'll tell you where I'm going with this lawsuit. If it's my kid that drowns in that pool, I'm going to Rafer for the win. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Have we exhausted our, nope. Come on up. Have you spoken before? No, 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 no. Anyone else who hasn't spoken? We're going to let everybody who hasn't spoken yet speak.
My name is Hope Sitka, and I live on Prospect Ave. I've been in this town all my life. I came from Merrick, very congested. I never even had a yard. I moved to Prospect Ave 48 years ago. And I thought I was in heaven. My kids had a place to play. And it was my dream. I love West Springfield. My daughter just purchased a house right in West Springfield when she could have moved to the Cape. Could you believe that? But my point is, we've been fighting for the crime on the bottom of the hill. Ask the police officers what we go through. I can't even wa, I couldn't even walk down the street when my kids were small. Oh, don't worry, don't worry. Those are only apartment buildings. Well, what was in those apartment buildings? Drug addicts, drug pushers, and God knows what else. Go to Dunkin' Donuts. And you see them sitting there slobbering. I asked the manager one time, what's this? He goes, right there. Pointed to those apartments. Those apartments 48 years ago, they told me were decent apartments. Yes, they were. But you know what times change? I'm not worried about these luxury apartments next year or two years or five years. I'm worried about them 10 years. This town has an obligation to help the children and help our senior citizens protect them against the crime. And, oh my God. The cars that go up Prospect Ave is unbelievable. One night, I counted 150 race car drivers going up and down our street. We called the cops. They couldn't get there fast enough. This is a, I pay a lot of money by taxes. Would you put this on Rogers Ave? Do we, Apricot Lane? No, you wouldn't. I'm begging you for the future of our area. We're decent people. We have enough traffic. We have enough renter property. And don't get me wrong, renter. I rented all my life apartment buildings. I have nothing against these people. The problem is, what happens in 10 years? You're going to sit there and tell us everything's good because it's not. I was here again, I was here 48 years ago when the bottom of the hill, they said that was going to be a great apartment building. Well, guess what? Like I said, ask the cops of West Springfield, they'll tell you. I'm here now for my grandchild. And my daughter just had a baby. And it's going to grow up in West Springfield. And I wanted to know that it's safe. We have enough in our, in our area of town. And I love this town so much. And for the Holyoke Mall, why is the traffic not enough traffic? I'll tell you why. They cut the hours. What are the pandemic hours at the Holyoke Mall now? What are the, what are the hours? I think it's from 11 to 7. So there you go. There's two hours of no traffic. So listen, I'm not here, I, I live in this town. I got to accept whatever you decide. But I'm going to tell you one thing. You want a future with young people that are decent, that will uphold the law and educate these kids? Do what's right for us for once in your life. Think about the people of this town and our area.
Okay. Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Have we gone through the room? Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to make two exceptions because the first guy was up. He didn't practice hard enough. So I'm going to let him finish his spiel. And then maybe the gentleman in the back. And then we're going to move to continue the public hearing. So you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President, for letting me finish my spiel. I left off with saying there's, that I, the developers. Is this on?
Okay, you have to speak up.
Oh, okay. I, I just need a couple more minutes. There we go. The developers, I thought, were still, are sincere. They, for the clientele they hope to have there, the young professionals, the retirees. Maybe they've got a list of potential tenants already. But I kind of doubt that. Once they pass, once the baton is passed for the developers to build whatever they want, they have no control over who the clientele's going to be. They're not involved in any kind of vetting to see who's going to be living there. And as I mentioned before, the foreign upon guerrillas, the feds and the state are going to fill the void and subsidize it if, if need be. Now, in the local newspaper, the reminder, "Our new governor has created a standalone, quote-unquote, Secretary of Housing to work across government and support every city in town to make sure we meet our goals." I'm not sure what those goals are. But I'm sure there's some sticks and some carrots whoever it is comes to this town, I would tend to think to try to push this project through. Now, just to summarize, there's too many unanswered questions here brought up by all the neighbors. And I'm not a civil engineer to answer all the traffic and the water and this and that, and this and that. But again, who is going to be there was paramount in my mind. Law enforcement's position that I recall last year, they were very concerned about it. I haven't, I don't know if those have been mitigated in some way. But what's interesting is, I looked through the petition, like the second page in. It requires a written statement outlining the impact, benefits, and detriments of the proposed amendment to the town. And as some of my neighbors said, you know, where's the details? Where, what are the benefits? Other than an anticipated need for housing, but the benefits to the immediate area is, I think, what, what the guidelines of the proposal form say. And my last statement is, maybe some of you remember, last year I was here and I said, the council, the developer's asking the council to take a gamble. I'll amend that a little bit. The developer's asking you to get us to take the gamble. Thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you. Gentlemen in the back corner, you have something to add you haven't previously spoken to?
Good evening, again. Thank you for allowing me to come back up here. I really had one, listening to the rest of the people talk here. I have, I sort of have a question for Mr. Sypek. When, when he was asked about the traffic study, and he said they were working with the DPW, but they don't have any results yet. So if they don't have any results yet, why is a zone change even being asked to get changed? They have no results. So I would say to you, Mr. Sypek, get your results from the DPW. And get them during the holiday season, when the traffic really backs up. Find out first before you go before the council and ask for a zone change. Get your answers before you ask your question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
Move to continue the public hearing?
Second.
Moving seconded, a motion on the floor to continue the public hearing to the next meeting. Any discussion from the council? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Kloon?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
I vote yes. So we're going to continue the public hearing to our next meeting, which is February 6. And remember my speech at the beginning. Anybody who's previously spoken, if you want to address the council, again, it's not something you've previously spoken to. Okay? Appreciate that. Thank you. And if you want to send emails, send them along. We'll accumulate those, too. Thank you.
I know it. I know it's on the porch, it's sitting there. I saw him, but. But you know what I thought, too? It's a good lesson. He said what? Who said that?
All right. So where's our student rep? We're going to let you go now so you can go home and do your homework. Now, this was a great lesson in democracy for you, right? All right. Speak into the microphone. You want to give yourself a couple of minutes till?
Want to just take a five-minute recess?
No. Jeez, come on.
No, they're going to stick around.
All right, are we ready?
Excuse me, everyone. We are still trying to conduct the town meeting. If you could please take your conversation out into the hallway, please. That'd be much appreciated. Thank you very much. That'd be much appreciated, thank you very much.
Okay, if we could, everyone's attention, we're gonna move on with the rest of our agenda. So we're gonna move to our student rep, who's gonna fill us in on what's going on in the school. Go ahead. Speak loudly.
Yeah, I don't wanna take much of your time, but...
Take as much time as you want.
All right. I just wanna say that this week, students at the high school will be taking their midterm assessments. They'll be starting tomorrow, so that's gonna be fun, I guess. Midterms are a way for teachers to measure students' level of understanding of course materials and also helps them identify like areas of improvement. So I'm sure this week will be a busy one for students and teachers alike. This week is a pretty eventful one. We have the teachers' awards, so students can nominate their teachers for the Pioneer Valley Excellence in Teachings Award. So it's pretty much teachers who just go beyond and help our students succeed. We also have the scholarship fair on January 25th, which will be a great opportunity for seniors to take advantage of. It will take place in the cafeteria from 4:30 to 5:30, and students can meet with their scholarship representatives and learn more about their many scholarship opportunities. Student Government is also planning the February pep rally. Pep rallies serve as a much-needed morale booster for our students. So this year, the student government is hoping to surprise students with fun activities that each class can participate in. So I think that'll be very nice to see. And as the last thing, I would like to congratulate Don Colobo, Paul Benary, Ben Drohan, and Patrick Armstrong, who qualified for the New Balance Nationals just this past weekend with a time of 3 minutes and 46 seconds in the sprint medley relay.
Wow, that's awesome, thank you, appreciate that. Any questions from the council? Nope, okay, great. All right, so now we're gonna go back to public comment. I know we had one lady who wanted to talk about charter school crosswalk.
I did. You guys have been so crying to me. So my daughter goes to school over at the charter school. My name is Keith McDonald, I live here in West Springfield. Been here for about 10 years. My daughter goes over to charter school in West Springfield, and at present, there's a patch in the middle of our crosswalk. There's no lights, there's no anything to mark it. There's like an extra crosswalk kinda next to it in the middle. We have a trouble with parents parking wherever they'd like. I have a picture here of a parent parking in the crosswalk, on the sidewalk, all the way up to the fire hydrant. We have no crosswalk guard. We've had a crosswalk guard at the first two weeks of school. I've talked to the police, I've talked to the town. I've tried to contact 22 News. I've tried to contact, I've spoke to Rachel, I've spoke to Officer Reed, I've spoke to Mayor Will. I've tried to speak to the principal of the school, but that seems to be the hardest thing to do. I've spoke to her administrative assistant, and nothing's happening. I realize that it's a charter school and that funds have not been provided to allow for the town to provide a crosswalk guard for us. And Mayor Will said that you'd be happy to suggest, you know, safety standards and different things at the school. The police said that the school was very difficult to work with. And the school is saying it's the town's responsibility. Apparently, once the children leave the gates of the school and they go on the sidewalk, they're no longer the school's responsibility. But the children are crossing wherever they'd like to. Parents are parking wherever they'd like to. Passersby are sometimes, I almost got hit by a car doing 60 miles an hour through the school zone. They almost lost control in front of the school, crossed the double yellow line, wobbled. Yeah, it's becoming a huge problem. And the school's solution is to say that, you know, please drop off on the school's side of the street. It's not accounting for all the walkers and everything. And I guess what I'm hoping to do, Mayor Will said that he would get the crosswalk painted, but I didn't know as far as trying to get a crosswalk. I know Mr., is that Egan?
Eager is over there.
Eager, that you're the councilman for that area. And I'm really just trying to get some pressure put on. Seems to be a common thing for charter schools, though, to skimp on the safety standards 'cause chickpea is also doing the same thing. I'd be interested to know how many other charter schools don't have crosswalk guards compared to the public schools too. But yeah, as far as West Springfield goes, it's like watching live action Frogger. A child is gonna get killed down there or seriously injured if we don't do anything. So it's not just my child, it's about all of the children down there. And I'm hoping to get some help, however that works.
Yeah, so just so you know, we have no control over the charter school because it's a, basically, it's a private business. It'd be like, you know, someone from Sullivan Papers saying they wanted a crossing guard or something. They're gonna be like, okay, we'll go hire one. So it's a difficult situation. We can talk to the mayor about doing the road improvements and the crosswalk, and maybe even putting the lighting there. I mean, we definitely need pedestrian crossings. We can certainly work on improving that. We have no control over the principal. Like I said, it's a private business. And as you mentioned, it's very difficult to deal with that school. And quite frankly, I've heard about other charter schools too. So, but anyway, we'll do what we can from our end. We have a traffic and safety committee. Counselor Eager's the District One counselor. So he'll get on that, I promise you, he'll do his due diligence. And, you know, we'll see what we can do.
But how much does it cost to have a crosswalk guard? Per year, roughly?
They're paid by the hour. I don't think it's a tremendous amount of money.
Yeah, 'cause I would be curious to know who I have to speak to so I can press that with the school and say, you know, like... I mean, they take, I don't know, $14,000 in tax dollars away from the public school to divert them into the charter school, so I mean...
Yes, the city pays per student that goes there quite a bit of money.
Right, I think it's $14,000.
And also, the city also pays for the busing. So the city's on the hook for a lot of money that goes to the charter school.
Yeah, and I'd like to see the charter school take responsibility because I mean, it's a danger to the drivers and passersby's too.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So we'll work on it. Counselor Eager, you had a follow-up?
Yes, so I think the most effective strategy, because we don't have direct control of the hiring, is work with the media. Reach out with them, make a public information... Let the media and the court of public opinion move the administrative staff to do the right thing. That's gonna be the quickest route. I cross Main Street a lot. I know about the traffic, and it's a big problem. And the whole road's going to be under many redesigns over the years. But the quickest solution is work with the media.
We will talk to the DPW, the city engineer, about maybe a, you know, pedestrian cross sign or something like that. We'll talk about that.
With all due respect, I've been on this thing since September. We're calling, talking, everything. Officer Reed said start leaving a paper trail. I mean, you know, I've contacted 22 News twice. From what I understand, if four people can make a report, then they will send somebody from the I-team over. So I would encourage you as a council member in that area to please reach out to them yourself. I mean, at the end of the day, even though it's a charter school, a lot of these kids are members of our own community. And I'm sure we don't wanna see anybody get hurt out there. I was, I live right by the crosswalk where the crosswalk guard was killed on Elm Street. And, you know, I don't wanna see anything else like that happen in this town, it still upsets me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Eager will follow up after the traffic and safety committee meeting. Anyone else? Public speak out. Roberta, patiently waiting.
Thank you, President Sullivan, thank you, councilors. Tough to follow all those speakers, I have to tell you. But we all deserve a little levity, right? And I'm obviously a resident of West Springfield, but I'm here on behalf of It's West Springfield, Inc., which is the nonprofit organization here in town. I'm the president. And just wanted to let you know that after a two-year hiatus due to the interloper COVID-19, Winterfest 2023 actually is gonna be held throughout, not only the Central Business District this year, which it was previously, it's also now expanded onto Union Street and to Main Street with businesses. The community, the businesses, individuals are really stepping forward. They're a delight to work with. You'll get more information soon, but just so you know, and you're all invited, and everything is free. It will be Saturday, February 25th, from 9 to 1 in all the various locations in town. Primarily the Central Business District, and again, on Main Street and Union Street. So everybody who has a business there is going to be doing something special as it's relevant to that particular business. And you'll get all the particulars coming up. And we're going to even have our police department, our fire department involved, and a whole bunch of different things. And some very exciting things that are gonna be happening again at the various locations. So keep an eye out. And if anybody has any questions, they can call 413-279-4567. Or they can send an email to itswestspringfield@gmail.com. But there are gonna be a lot of fun events. We have a major sponsor for this, and you'll hear a little bit more about that in the future. But just to keep in mind, it's Saturday, February 25th, from 9 to 1 in all the various downtown locations. And each business is really stepping up. We have a lot of new businesses in town, and particularly in those corridors, those areas. And they all wanna be participatory. They're just a delight to work with. They're coming together for the community. We all need a little bit of, you know, fun and excitement and something beyond what we've had to deal with in the past few years. So please keep that in mind, and I'll be back to tell you more. And probably some of our board of directors will be back as well. We have 17 now on the board of directors. It's an extremely diverse board with a lot of folks from different religions, different everything. And they're really stepping up and very excited as well. So thank you, and continue to do good work that you do.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes, I'll move, I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of January 3rd, 2023. Second? Yeah, we'll get back to that. There's a motion on the floor, any discussion? All those, Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers? Counselor Eager?
Yes.
I vote yes, the minutes are approved. All right, back to public comment. Somebody else want to address the council? Come on up, state your name, hit the microphone, address. Five minutes of conversation.
We're good?
We're good.
Todd Staglinski, 180 Chilson Road, right here in West Springfield. Hopefully, all of you were aware of the recent illegal dumping incident out in Bear Hole. Two mattresses were dumped, caught on DPW trail cam. The town's pursuing that pretty nicely, hitting each offender with a $300 fine in a trespass. And from what I'm told, if they don't pay it, then the town reserves the right to pursue it criminally, which could result in thousands of dollars. $300 is nice for Bear Hole. That's a specific Bear Hole ordinance. When I look at the online ordinances, what is the fine? If I go down and I dump a couch, say in Mitten Lake Park, right in front of Santa's house, just hypothetical, what's the fine for that? It costs the town more probably to dispatch out a crew and to dispose of that couch, a table, remodeling debris, whatever the heck it is that's dumped throughout town annually from, you know, incident to incident, than the $25 for a first offense. I've heard through the grapevine that the council, maybe the ordinance subcommittee, whoever deals with fines like this, is exploring increasing that fine, possibly to $300 right across the board. I would support that. I just wanna get your ear that if it does come across your purview that this is on the table, the $25 is ridiculous. I mean, if I'm an unscrupulous person and I'm gonna risk go dumping, take the $25 fine, it's cheaper to take the $25 fine than it is to pay $50 for a mattress for a disposal. If I have a box set, there's 100 bucks. It only cost me 25 bucks. That's a good deal dumping in West Springfield. You get my point. So if it does come across the table, I think it's time. $25 is very outdated. Think about what's best in West Springfield. No one likes seeing dumping. Everyone likes seeing dumpsters being held to the law. You know, it's quality life, it's a blight issue. We all know what leads to that. I mean, could you educate me? Is this something that's, anything that's active with the council right now? Because like I say, I hear stuff behind the scenes, but it's best to hear it from you guys.
Not presently, but it's certainly something, you know, there's been light conversation about it, but it's certainly something we can look at.
Okay, that's all.
Counselor Powers is the chair of the ordinance committee, so he'll take a look at that.
Excellent, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Okay, no one finished business, new business. Let me see. Let's go down to Counselor Powers. You wanna move the school zone? I can do it if you want.
No, that's all right, thank you though. Move to approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 400, Traffic Orders of the Code of the Town of West Springfield to enact Article 11 relative to establishing school zones.
Moving seconded, did the ordinance committee take this up?
We did this evening, and we voted unanimous in favor.
Great. Any other discussion on the motion? Are we ready to vote? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Eager?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
I vote yes, it's unanimous, thank you. Counselor Clune, I think you have one for us this evening?
Yes, move to approve the appointment of Dr. Heather Sankey to the Board of Health with a term to begin on February 6, 2023, expire on February 5, 2026.
Second.
Moving seconded, did your committee take this up?
We did, we voted tonight unanimous approval for this appointment.
Okay, great, any other discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Counselor Laflamme?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Vice President Clune?
Yes.
Counselor DiStefano?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Eager?
Yes.
I vote yes, it's unanimous. Welcome back, Heather. Did I miss anything?
Just one thing, Mr. President.
Oh, yes, communication from councilors.
Thank you. I just wanna report out on the subcommittee that was established to review the semifinalists for superintendent. President Sullivan had asked me to serve as the council representative on the committee, there were 13 of us. The committee was chaired by two school committee members, Kira Thompson and Colleen Marcus. Last Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we met to review a total of six semifinalists. Thursday night, after the last interviewee was scheduled, we met, and the final recommendation was to move the names of three semifinalists forward to the school committee. Because I'm not sure that those names are yet public, I won't state their names here tonight, but I'm sure if there were questions, those questions could be directed to the school department. And again, I just wanna thank school committee members Thompson and Marcus for their time and all the members of the subcommittee. There were administrators, teachers, parents, and to give up the amount of hours they gave up last week to be able to vet these candidates just speaks to the commitment of the individuals involved. So I just wanted to recognize them.
And I wanna thank... And I want to thank you for taking up that responsibility and time commitment also, appreciate it. Any other councilors? Any communication? Oh, Counsel Smith?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention that the St. Patrick's Colleen Contest and Award Evening is coming up January 28th, and I'd like to add to the council agenda on February 6th, that the Colleen and her court are invited for introduction to us all, and perhaps a photo opportunity. I would also like to encourage anybody from the media to come partake in the evening. Certainly, we'd love to get the message out there, it's been three years since our contests and award winners have been named, so it's gonna be a great night.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Not a counselor, but I don't believe we voted to move to continue the public hearing for Whitney, I think it was just...
Yeah, we did.
It was taken as a vote?
Yeah. It was unanimous, wasn't it? To continue it? I thought we did. I thought we moved to continue the public hearing.
I remember voting on it.
Yeah, we all voted on it.
The public hearing, not the vote?
Not the actual vote?
The vote.
What vote? What are you talking about? We voted to continue the public hearing.
7A.
Yeah, to move to continue it, to...
Oh, the one that's on the agenda?
Yeah.
I already told the public we weren't gonna take action on it.
Oh, okay, I thought you were going to say it's a public hearing, so that's...
No, we continue the public hearing, I told everybody we weren't taking action till after the planning board's recommendation was received, so. So it is said, so it is done.
I think that may still require a vote to continue it.
Right. Just like we did in the other public hearings. Why don't we get a mask on? School crosswalk that... Did we do that in the last meeting? Did we continue this for this meeting?
We just, it was put on this meeting, we moved the public hearing to this, and we just forwarded it without, we waived the reading, because you have to have it on the agenda twice, so we waived the formal hearing. We can certainly take a vote on it if you want.
I mean, my understanding is, I understand you're not taking action of it, but you do have to move to continue the public hearing to the next year. You're moving to continue the zoning amendment parcel to be changed from residence aid to residency to the next regularly scheduled...
You mean the action item? We moved the public here, we continued the public hearing?
Okay.
The action item is what you're referring to? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. All right, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you.